So how do you get the background Barbara? Looks like it's summertime.
I know, isn't that lovely?
Yes, not what we see anymore, just great club. I guess it's seven o'clock, so if we can get started. You want to go through the rules for the meeting?
Very quickly, so this is the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for April 28, taking place obviously in the Zoom format. Chair is Jeff Pritchard, and it is co-hosted by planning staff. So that's Diane Glombowski, Bruce Lofgren, and me Deb Jones. Kara Havland is also attending the meeting to do the minutes. No public hearings tonight, so any member of the public who wants to speak to the commission needs to do so under Public Communications. And if you raise your hand, we will acknowledge you and unmute you and allow you to speak to the commission. You know, as usual, the votes will be roll call as necessary. And Jeff will be chairing the meeting, so go ahead Jeff.
Okay, so I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. First item is roll call, and it looks like we have everyone in attendance tonight. So we have no public hearings. Consideration, no consideration of public hearings. Next item for action is approval of minutes of April 14. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 14. Is there a second?
Double second.
It's moved in second, does anyone have any corrections? None? I have one item that I think needs a little investigation. On the very first paragraph under site plans, it talks about Greg Fettis' statement. It says that the gravel street will be utilized for vehicle drop-offs and pickups, especially during inclement weather and for elderly residents of the building. Could you make sure that's true about the elderly residents? Because I don't want to have people come up in two years from now and say we've got to have a sign up, it can only be used by elderly residents. And if it isn't, we can either just say something it was used for, available for people making heavy lifts or lifting large items. You know, some words like that, which is what I thought he implied, but I'm not sure what he really said. Or just delete, delete that section. Because it could be misinterpreted for what the use is for the building. That's all I had. Is there no other issues on, does anyone have anything else? If not, then I'll move for a vote on approval of the minutes. All those in favor, you can either raise your hands or say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any? Any opposed to the motion or abstentions? Hearing none, the motion is carried unanimously. Public Communications, does anyone in the public wish to address the commission? If so, you can raise your hands. I don't see anybody. Do we have anybody other than the participants?
Yeah, if you check on the attendees.
Attendees, it says eight.
Right, that's right, and I see no hands raised there. Most of the applicants.
Okay, so then we'll move on to no special permits, no subdivisions. Next item is site plans. Here's SIT 20-04 Susan Lane, Residence Cam 100 Susan Lane. I assume the applicant.
Yeah, I'm just promoting the applicants to panelists so they can introduce themselves and go over the application. Doesn't seem like we can see them or hear them right now, though.
Let me see if I can do anything with that.
I just, I'm Dave Reagan, I just unmuted myself Deb. Yeah, how you guys doing? This is kind of fun, huh? We can stay at home or in an office and see everybody, saving money on gas. But yeah, I think Norm, who's been kind of spearheading this for me, Norm's on the phone or on the call as well. So we hope that you guys will give us a favorable thumbs up to move forward on this application.
Yes, Norm Tebow, Killing the Engineering, I am on the line. My IT guy was supposed to be here with a camera today, but he never showed, so. I'm doing this, I can see you guys, and I'm actually on my phone. So I'm using two methods of communicating tonight.
So would you like to summarize what you're requesting?
Sure.
Briefly the application.
Yeah, and Norm, not to interrupt, if you don't mind, I can share the site plan if that will help you, and you can go over that.
Absolutely.
All right, I'm just gonna share my screen and put the site plan up so everyone can look at it. All right, here it is, Norm, go ahead.
Okay, so what we're proposing is a, is a single-family home on this lot at the end of Susan Lane. And the, there's actually Susan Lane, actually an access right of way, which will be combined with the existing lot that has fronted on BB Cove for a total area of 0.9 acres when all is said and done. They are proposing a single-family home. The, we've got approximately 86 feet to the mean-high waterline from the edge of the proposed deck on the house. House itself is a little bit further, it's 14 feet further, so we're, you know, we're 100 feet from there. There's a rather steeply sloped lot, we're going to take advantage of the terrain. They're going to have kind of a tall basement wall, a 10-foot basement wall and a walkout basement. We're really trying to minimize the amount of grading that is going to be done on the site. As you can see, we're showing a loam stockpile. The site is served by Public Water and Sewer. There'll be a force main that will be installed to connect to the public sanitary sewer. And the limits of the disturbance and the limits of all the grading will be surrounded with silt fence backward stake hay bales throughout the construction. There is no activity proposed beyond the limits of the grading actually shown on the plan. There is no proposal to disturb any further or any closer to the mean-high waterline or to BB Cove itself. We also provided some correspondence. I'm sure that the commission is aware that there was some land clearing done with portions that actually, that actually encroached onto the Avalonia Land Trust property. Ian Cole, who is a certified soil scientist and environmental scientist, has been corresponding with the Connecticut DEEP on this. They have met on-site a couple of times, and currently the proposal is to monitor what was cut because, and to hopefully see if it does come back this year. None of the root systems on the vegetation that was disturbed was cut or removed. So it is the belief of Mr. Cole that the vegetation that was removed that is in question will regenerate itself. The Connecticut DEEP has agreed to this approach, and it will be monitored throughout the growing season. If by chance, this vegetation does not come back, or it doesn't come back in the amount or flourish as they feel it should be, and at that time, the planting plan prepared and submitted to the Connecticut DEEP for approval. We provided copies of all the correspondences with the Connecticut DEEP to Bruce. I believe he's given you everything in your packages as well.
If you guys can hear me, can I share my screen real quick?
Yeah, I can stop sharing.
Thank you.
There you go.
All right. So this is, I like to always show pictures, pictures are great. And like Norm said, we are currently working with the DEEP. We apologize for our cutting a few of these bushes down by the water. And like you said, I think we're going to be okay. This is what, this is our proposal, this is the picture of the house, you know, sitting up on the hill there. We're excited to get this project going. We basically marketed this project through Zillow, and we actually got a young couple from, they're actually from Boston, they both went to Indianapolis, and they graduated, and they're a young couple, they're excited to move up here and start a family. And so this is, this is what it will hopefully look like once we build it out, if you guys can give us the approvals.
And our, is requested is approval for the CAM, correct?
That is correct, Norm Tebow, Killing the Engineering.
Right. So applicant have anything else to add? Not your project Bruce, you want to, do you have anything else to go over?
Um, sure, yeah, I can add a few things. As the applicants mentioned, this is Bruce Lofgren from Planning and Development Services. As they mentioned, you know, this is here because it's CAM application. New single-family dwellings within 100 feet of the coastal resource are required to submit a CAM application. I know the actual dwellings, about 100 feet, but the deck does protrude to about 86 feet away from the coastal resource. They submitted the erosion incentive controls as part of this application. You know, there's a silt fence line there that's going to be backed with hay bales. That's going to be the limit of disturbance line, and that's about 62 feet away from the coastal resources, coastal resource. So there's not going to be any land disturbance seaward of that limit. And it's my opinion that, you know, with the mitigation measures they're having, it's not going to have any adverse impacts on the coastal resource. And I do have a draft motion that I can put up.
I think that was emailed to us. This has been provided to the applicant Bruce?
Yes, I, this was emailed out to all the commission members this morning, as well as the, both of the applicants that are here tonight.
Did the applicant express any concerns with the motion?
No, sir, no, sir. The modifications that were made to the plan since the initial submission were generally by Public Works and the Sewer Commission to make sure that we provided the correct detail for the connection into the, into the public sanitary sewer. And I believe one of the other items that you're looking for is that the access maintenance and utility easement is established and recorded for all other appropriate lots of budding Susan Lane, and we certainly have no objection to that.
So then I'll open it up to commission members for any questions. I'll start with you Mike, okay?
The only thing that I was wondering about is that do we need to include anything about the plantings in the motion? And how they're gonna?
Well, if you're referring to, you know, the restoration plan that Norm had mentioned with work through the DEEP, I didn't include that in the motion because that's between, you know, the applicant and DEEP. So really, anything they advise and agree on in terms of a restoration plan would supersede, you know, what we're looking at here tonight.
No other questions, thank you.
Okay. How's that? Do you have any questions?
I don't believe so, no. This is just for the, this is just for the CAM.
For the CAM, yes. Barbara Tarbox?
No questions.
Sue Southern?
No questions, thanks.
Steve Woodcheck?
No questions.
Kevin Footfall?
No questions Jeff.
Nobody's asking, everybody's quiet.
It's a CAM, so.
Yeah.
Pretty consistent, and Bruce gave a rundown on it, well, I think that we needed, so.
Yeah. I just had a couple of items. The boundary location for the silt fence is set, it doesn't look like it has any specified location on the drawing. Does that make any difference as to where that goes? Is it placed within the 14-foot flood plain, keeps it out of the VE zone?
Yeah, as long as, this is Norm Tebow from Killing the Engineering. Obviously, the intention of any erosion controls is to prevent the migration from sediment, of sediment toward the resource area. So the limits shown, I don't think it really has a lot of bearing, you know, as far as the flood zone VE or the flood zone, the hazard zone X. What the premise of it is, is to make sure that we contain whatever sediment that might be generated and, you know, keep it within the limits of those silt fences and prevent it from migrating toward BB Cove.
And then the landscaping that would be done after the house is completed would stay within that boundary? There wouldn't be any landscaping done outside of?
No, there's, there is no intention to do that. I mean, the, the site right now is, is pretty much grassed. It's a, it's a, just a, you know, obviously there are a lot of boulders here that we located on-site, but in between the boulders are just, it's just a grassed area, mostly, mostly natural grasses that grow there.
Right, no, I meant that there's nothing else that would make any change in what we have today.
I don't believe so, and perhaps Mr. Reagan could answer that a little more specifically, but I don't believe that there are plans to do any further landscaping.
Yeah, that's correct, we're just looking to, you know, utilize the silt fence as our boundary, build the house, contain, you know, get some erosion control up and then contain that area. And no, we're not looking to, you know, they asked about, you know, a future dock and things of that nature, and I said, that's a whole different application.
Oh, right, that would be a whole separate.
Yeah, exactly, so we're just looking to basically, you know, where we are is where we want to go.
Build the house.
Yeah.
Is there going to be an access way down to the water?
You know, like Norm just said, it's pretty much open grass growing, they can walk, you know, right down to it. But there's no pathways or, well, actually, there was an old pathway to the, to the north side here, but we're not looking at doing anything.
No changes, I thought was.
Correct, correct.
Okay. I didn't have anything else. Does anyone have any concerns with the proposed motion? If not, dynamic motion to approve coastal site plan 20-04 Susan Lane Residence 100 Susan Lane, subject to the following modifications. One, technical items raised by staff shall be addressed. Two, that there shall be no land disturbance seaward of the silt fence line marked on the plan. Three, both parcels shall be legally merged prior to the issuance of a building permit. Four, that an access maintenance and utility easement is established and recorded for all other appropriate lots of budding Susan Lane. This easement shall be recorded in land records prior to the issuance of a building permit. In approving this application, the commission finds that the proposed activity as modified is consistent with all applicable goals and policies in CGS 22A-92, in that it incorporates reasonable measures which would mitigate the adverse impacts of the proposed activity on coastal resources. Is there a second?
Second.
Who's second? Okay, it's moved in second. Does anyone have any comments, concerns, or questions on the motion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously.
All right.
Thank you.
Good luck with this.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Next item is the Oyster Club modification, SIT 20-06 13 Water Street. Let's see, applicant.
We have the applicants here to present the project. We have Greg Fettis and Dan Meiser for the project.
The applicant would like to proceed with a presentation. Do they have to be recognized?
Deb's got to promote them.
I just promoted the man.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, Julia Leeming is also joining us.
Okay. Hello.
Hello. Hey, guys.
This is Dean Gregg.
We've had issues with Greg in the past.
Last but not least, Mike.
You asked your name.
Oh, here we go.
Who you representing, so.
There it is.
Am I up? Oh, yeah, there we go. All right, I'll get started, I'll kick it off. My name's Greg Fettis, Fettis Engineering, office at 70 Essex Street in Mystic, Connecticut, here with Julia Leeming, who's the architect for the project, and Dan Meiser, who's the owner of the property and the business. So we were here just recently, back in December 2019, and things were kind of, our approval basically phased to, phased the project from like a ledge removal, phase one, to the second, first and second floor addition, and kind of redoing the stairs going up to the treehouse. Well, since that time, a lot has happened. Obviously, we're in a whole different world now. And Dan kind of made a business decision that we're just going to move forward with the whole, the whole project right now, because we don't, we don't know when we're going to be reopening, when we're going to be reopening with kind of reasonable use of the property and so forth. So as part of it, as part of the project, the ledge removal, the ledge didn't come out exactly as we drew it on our plan, so some stuff came out easier, some stuff came out a little bit harder. But we ended up with a little more room back there than we kind of originally thought we would have. And then we had some issues with second means of egress that we were working with the Fire Marshal Fire Department with getting down from the treehouse. Not sure if we mentioned at the time, we were originally working with the Fire Marshal as well as the Art Association to utilize possibly their property for an area of refuge and then kind of a second way down. Well, kind of concurrently with that negotiation, we realized that the ledge, although, I don't know if anyone's been back there and taken a peek at it, but it's quite an extensive little project we pulled off and have considerable amount of room now, and we actually have enough room to do the second form of egress on our own property, and that's shown. Let me see if I can share. Is that shared? So that second form of egress is located to the, kind of the south of the property in between the addition that we previously got approved in December and the upper shed, which is for cooking for the treehouse. So we were able to put that second form of egress in there. We also had some encroachments on the Art Center property, which is shaded here on the northern border line or northern, northern property line. So basically, there was like a four, four and a half foot piece of deck that was removed, and then these planters were also all removed. All that's been done already, so we did remove that because we knew we were encroaching on the Art Center property. And the balance of our deck was within 30 inches of grades, so therefore, it didn't count as a building. Therefore, we didn't meet, didn't need to meet setbacks. You could see also the, the actual staircase that we kind of got approved in December. We had, we had to basically take down the original staircase, which probably went another 10 feet towards Water Street, about the same, actually, the exact same distance from the property line, and we were able to move it further to the east. So as another kind of piece of this, this approval, we have, it's about a four-foot by 28 and a half-foot dining room expansion. You can see, let me just blow this up a little bit. So that's this first floor addition right here, and it's basically, and I'm gonna let Dan talk about this. It's not necessarily to expand the seating down there, it never kind of was, it's always been tight in that dining room. But there's potentially some new regulations that are coming out regarding social distancing in restaurants, and I'll let Dan, when I'm done, just talk about that briefly. But we also added a walk-in cooler that's about six, six and a half feet by 15 and a half feet, just behind that. All this is kind of tucked behind the existing building, so you don't really see any of it from anywhere. You can see a little better now, that second form of egress, which is basically just going to take you down to the south side in case there's a problem. You have two ways to get down. I think I hit on all the parts of the application. You know, we, pretty much the rest of it staying the same. It was all, that whole gap between the back of the building and the treehouse was a lot of ledge, so it was all impervious material anyway. We will be redoing the rain garden as it shows on the north side of the building. We'll be cleaning and replacing pervious brick walks and so forth. The landscaping along the front that sits on top of the little wall, which is located, the handicap entrance, all that will remain. The ivy, it's really taken off after a few years, and it's really put a nice touch on the front of the building. Again, Julie is here to speak about the architecture, if we want to talk about that. If we want to talk about that, if there's any specific questions and Dan's here to just answer any questions or talk about the, the new social restaurant.
Yeah, I'll, I'll hop in just real quick here. Just to give a little more background, as Greg mentioned, we had originally decided to do this project in two phases as we indicated at the last meeting. And that was really just to not have to close down the restaurant during peak season. So we did part of the renovation this winter, January, early February. And then the plan was to, to essentially replicate the same, same time period next year. Obviously with the COVID crisis being what it is and the restaurants, you know, being closed, even though it's, it's terrifying and daunting to take on a project of this magnitude. We had already, you know, started it and we're halfway done with it. And the restaurant was closed, so we had the time, we had the weather. And, and we had our people, people, you know, at home, safe and sound. So it made sense to move forward with the project and try to knock it out now before we reopen this summer. To Greg's point too about the dining room, even before this crisis hit, you know, we, we wanted to be able to expand the dining room. I think it's about a four or six foot bump out to the rear. So you don't see it from the, the road. But really the goal there is to just have more space in the dining room. You know, the, the layout, it's is, as you know, if you've been in the Oyster Club dining room, is cozy at best. And so we wanted to be able to open that up. Given the world that we live in now and, and with the very real potential, especially in the early phases of reopening restaurants in the state, we're definitely gonna have social distancing guidelines, expansion of space between tables. So this, this at least, at least gives us a little more flexibility in terms of setting up that dining room. You know, to the state satisfaction in terms of, of safe and safety and distancing.
So the applicant have anything else to add? Is this your project, Diane?
Yes.
Do you have anything from the staff to?
Not much, unless you have any specific questions. I mean, they went over the two accessways now down from the treehouse, the removal of the deck and the deck that was over the property line. And then the small addition to the patio and the addition of a walk-in cooler in the rear. So everything else basically stays the same. They still are going to be doing the validation program for all their seating. And they still have the drainage as previously proposed. They had a requirement to basically clean out the existing drainage system and reestablish the rain garden. So they're still doing that. And other than that, the, the motion we have for them is basically just to make sure that before they actually get their CEOs for either the reestablishment of the treehouse or, or the actual dining room that they, there's a P E that certifies that that ledge is stable. So we want to make sure that was still part of the conditions.
Was the applicant given a copy of the proposed motion?
Yes.
Do they have any comment?
We're okay with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very simple.
Yep.
So if there's nothing else, then I'll open it up to the commission for any questions. Start with Michael Kane.
I guess that the, the lean to addition, is this a new, is this something different than what was proposed originally?
Yes, so the only, well, yes, so the difference where it says lean to over ground level, anchored to ledge, that's actually what's there now. That's being removed. It actually has been removed already. So we're putting in a four foot shed, I guess, extension of the existing roof line. Four foot addition to the existing dining room. And then adding a walk-in cooler behind that. So tho- those are the two new parts.
Sort of being the same space being repurposed? Is that what it sounds like?
A little bit, yeah, yeah, go ahead, Julia.
Why don't I share my screen just to show you the floor plan? And then.
I don't know, I have to, do I have to unshare mine?
Maybe unshare, yep. There we go, okay. And then I will share my screen. Okay, so you're now, we're now flipped around, of course, but Water Street is right here.
Yep.
And the main dining room is right here. And what we're doing previously, there was a lean to back here. And what we're hoping to do is just push the dining room out four feet, as we've discussed, to create an opportunity for some booth seating or banquet seating. And then add a walk-in cooler behind it. So you're right, Mr. Kane, there, there was a lean to back there. We, in, in the first, in the first phase of approval from you, we were removing that and not putting anything in its stead. But because the ledge removal gave, gave us more space in the back, the hope was to again, give a little bit more breathing room to that dining space and give them some storage for, for food goods on the first floor with this walk-in cooler. And I'm just gonna show you the side elevation so you can see that it is very minimal in terms of what's visible. So this portion is the existing gable end of the dining room. And this is the extension of the dining room. And this is the walk-in cooler behind it. So we're essentially taking the high point of the roof line and just having a simple shed roof over it. First, the dining room and then the walk.
Can you tell me the, on the plan view, there was a note that said relocate the air conditioning unit. But when I'm looking at these, I don't see where they are or where they're relocated to.
Let me go. Which drawing are you?
The one that was previous, it was Greg's sheet.
Oh, let me go back to Greg's. These two, the ones that were wall hung?
Yeah, it just says AC units to be relocated.
Those were two, right, those were two wall hung units on the deck. Those we are still sorting out exactly where they will go. But the, the intention is to make them as, you know, as invisible from the public way as possible. Hopefully somewhere back here, potentially wall hung on the back of the wall.
They're not gonna interfere with that walkway.
They shouldn't. The walkway is very generous back there. I'll show you. Sorry, I'm probably making everybody feel seasick. On the first floor, we have six foot three from the back of the walk into the ledge. So there's plenty of space here. We can hang units on the back.
And what are those, like Mitsubishi kind of things or something like that?
That's what they were. I don't, I think we'll probably have a more cohesive system for the, for the second floor. So I don't know if it may just have a conventional condensing unit instead of a Mitsubishi unit. But I think that the general contractor and his sub are working that out right now.
Alright.
We certainly have plenty of space to hide AC equipment.
Okay, I just, I guess if the historic district people look at this, then I'm hoping that that is on it when they look at it. And then the only other question I have, and it might be directed toward Greg is given that we've removed more ledge than what you initially thought was gonna come out, does that, what kind of sheer drop is in the back? Or how is that protected?
So the it probably is a better question for Julia because she's detailed out a, like almost like a guide rail.
There'll be guardrails everywhere. So there's a guardrail on this stair that will then extend to the building. There's, it's hard to see in this old plan. But there's a double. This double line right here is indicating a guardrail. So again, it is along the edge of the first means of egress for the treehouse, extends to the building and then returns at this doorway to the bathroom. And then again, for the access to the building and then along the edge of the ledge and then it'll return into the treehouse shed. So there won't be any sheer drop for anybody. And you can see it does guardrail right there. So there is a consistent means of protecting people from falling.
Okay, mo- mostly I'm like, I'm thinking like a kid or something like that, someone who would, you know, get between the, the stairs and the, it's hard to see, you know, obviously from this.
There isn't any between the, the, from, from the beginning, from the, the first riser of the stair all the way around, there will be a guardrail. So there won't be a stair where someone can fall.
And it's, it's code compliant, you know, for four inches between the.
Yeah, and it's vertical. We, we toyed with doing horizontal, but they are vertical pickets. So no one, there's no ladder effect, no child can climb off and fall off.
Alright, that's, that, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elsa? Do you have any questions?
Generally, I think I'm fine. I'm just observing that whatever goes on in the back corner where we're talking about where the propane tanks are and whatnot. I don't think that can be seen from anywhere except from looking down from the steps, right? Because that's the ledge up there.
Yeah.
So that's completely enclosed anyway. So it's a good place to hide stuff. And I believe you actually have some room underneath the stairs? Because that's
Yes.
A dozen risers, so you've got lots of room there.
Put some condensing units potentially there.
And the stairs kind of hug, do they hug the cutout in the ledge?
Almost. This, this dash line here is the actual profile of the ledge up high. This is down low. So it, it, they almost hug. We were trying not to give them any sort of acute angles. So they are right angles, but it essentially hugs the edge of the ledge. Again, you can see the edge of the ledge here.
Alright, I have no further questions.
Okay, Barbara Tarbox?
I, yes, this probably goes back to, to before this was ever initially approved. And I'm just curious, why is there no requirement for handicapped access to the treehouse?
I think because, Dan, you have, you've answered this question articulately before, but jump in if I'm butchered.
Yeah.
But the idea is that on this ramped area, there is the opportunity for outdoor seating. So with the building code, if you can provide a, a similar version of the, the amenity that is difficult to make accessible to someone with ambulatory constraints, then the, the code allows you to give an, an equal version of that, which I think in this origin, I was not a part of the first phase of work, but I believe that this area could be converted into outdoor dining.
Yeah, and we, we've actually done it before. You know, we've had folks that have not been able to go up the treehouse stairs and, and we've served them the treehouse menu and a meal in that area that Julie's, Julie is referring to.
And can you give me some kind of history on the, how, how big the treehouse was when it was officially initially built and how many seats have been added since that time?
Greg, you wanna take that one?
Yeah, I'll take the.
You want me to stop sharing my screen?
Yeah, you can go back to my, if you can put mine up there, that'd be great. Oh, you know what, I'll just, because I don't know if you can see my pointer.
No, we can't. I'll stop sharing, you can take over.
Alright, can you see that? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so the original Stan, what year was that? Two, two thousand?
I think it was ten.
The treehouse?
What year is it now?
I don't know. No, it's not ten years old. It's, uh.
Twelve, I was reading the summary. It was either two thousand ten or two thousand.
So the original deck went to the setback line. At the time, I think we felt like we had to, even though maybe we didn't realize the thirty inch rule would have allowed us to go further. But so that, the original line was basically the ten foot setback line. I want to say the seats were.
And all the way over too, Greg. I mean, it's not, you know, moving south down Water Street, all that was original as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. Everything from the setback line to the south was original. And then.
So the, the total number of additional seats is not been that significant because the area where you see bar, that's just that, that's a bar and, and standing room. So really the only additional seats came in, yeah, that deck right there in that section. I'm shooting from the hip here. I'd say there's probably fifteen seats there.
I can figure that out, sorry. How do I not look at your screen?
Well, it's code compliant Fire Marshal's number of seats versus, yeah, so it's, but it's probably about fifteen.
I can't get to my file, otherwise I would confirm it for you.
That, that's okay, alright. It, it amazes me, and I'm impressed with how much you've been able to get on into this property. It's just considering where it was a few years ago.
Yes, thank you. So, yeah, I think Dan had to make a big decision whether or not to, you know, because this is such a staple or such a, I don't know what you call it in the, in the neighborhood. It's, you know, we knock it down and move somewhere else or, or do something, you know? But I think it was, it was so, so well known in this spot that he didn't want to leave it, so.
Anything else, Barbara?
No, that's it, thank you.
I think we're tapped out of space though, Barbara.
Sue Southern?
I don't have any comments. That's, I don't think you're tapped out of space. I don't know. But yeah, it's great what you've done with the property. It's amazing.
Thank you.
Steve Hoda check? You have anything?
I was just gonna ask about the, the second set of stairs. Are they? I don't have a good feel for what they look like or anything. It's, it's the same railings and everything are gonna be the.
Yes, very similar. If you remember the, the original stair, very similar to that pressure treated wood, you know, wooden picket with a, a hand, a guard rail, or sorry, a handrail set inside the guardrail, but very simple. Not meant to, to cause, you know, call too much attention to.
And is that, is that a, like a standard way to get down or is that an emergency?
It'll only be in emergencies. The standard way, Greg, do you mind highlighting that first?
Oh, yeah.
The standard way is the way that, you know, people know to come in and out of the treehouse. The, the back will only be, if God forbid, there is an emergency and we need to get people down two ways. But there will be, you know, plenty of signage letting you know you're not meant to go down that stair.
And that was a Fire Marshal?
Yes, yeah. The Fire Marshal required that the treehouse have a second means of egress. So that was something we were sort of working out concurrently to working on the renovation.
Okay. And then when you were talking about railings and you know, the pickets, that extends around the entire perimeter of the deck then? The treehouse?
Up here?
Yeah.
There, there is an existing guardrail already around the perimeter of the.
Okay, so that has not changed. That's, that's existing, okay. No, I think that's all I got.
Kevin Pitts?
Yeah, my only question was on the second floor, so there's no changes to the second floor?
Of the restaurant?
Yes.
No.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so the only changes are these shaded areas then.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any new questions that haven't, things that have been already addressed. Does anyone have any concerns with the proposed motion? If not, I'll make a, make the motion to approve a site plan modification, S I T twenty dash oh six for additions to the treehouse in the Oyster Club thirteen Water Street with the following modification. for additions to the treehouse in the Oyster Club thirteen Water Street with the following modification. One, Connecticut PE shall certify the safety of the ledge prior to certif- certify case certification of occupancy and certificate of site plan compliance for the treehouse and the new addition. Two, any staff technical items shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
Well, then second, it does, anyone have any questions on the motion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the, on the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You need to do the cam?
No, the cam was exempt because it was just a minor
Oh, okay.
Minor addition.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Old business, we have no old business, new business, new applications.
We have none.
Referrals, we have none. Nobody's making changes these days. Commission reports, report a chair. This the Susan Lane application raised an issue on, on how we make changes to approved I guess plant subdivisions that were centuries old. And I think we should try, ask our town attorney to review what our existing requirements are in our subdivision record regulations for site plan changes on site plans that were approved or put in place prior to the subdivision regulations, which is addressed, I think, in section one. One point three, section, subsection two. So if the staff could make a request town attorney to give us a written report on how we handle these in the future, because there are several areas in the town that this could apply to. Even in this, this one area, there's some on looks like undeveloped lots off of Warren in that area that might be affected by this. The second item I had was that the end of this month, the work on steamboat wharf, the underwater work approval expires at the end of the month. I was wondering if the staff by the status of that work.
Diane contacted them today, as a matter of fact. They are just about finished with the work. They plan to be done by Thursday. There may be a little bit of underwater work that has to be done after that, but the walkway will be open on Friday.
So there will be, we don't need to give them another extension, the only reason for asking. I don't think there are that many people notice it anyway. I have no, nothing else. Does anybody on the commission have anything to report? Everybody's quiet tonight. Report of staff?
I don't have anything to, any of you guys? Diane or Bruce, anything?
I don't have anything, no.
The ASP report is attached to the agenda. And the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies Quarterly Newsletter. Is there, there were some interesting items in there. Does anyone have anything else? If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I was just going to ask, are we going to have any business for the next meeting?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
Warmed up.
It's probably, three Water Street is likely to be on, it's a new building next to
Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, I've seen some activity down that way.
They're doing some geotechnical work for pilings for their design.
Early, they dug a hole in the, two couple of holes in the driveway.
Yeah.
See the real estate agents moved out.
That's right.
Anybody have anything else? Will you have a second for the motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, okay. Then we're adjourned at seven fifty-five.
Good job, Jeff.
Thank you all.
Thank you, staff.
Hey, we're getting good at this.